I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen in Millville, Massachusetts to order at 7 o'clock PM on Monday, November 20, 2023. And will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I know Richard Bremlis won't be here tonight, but we'll do a quick round of introductions.
Andrew Allward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Crusoe, Town Administrator.
Matthew Mealy.
Okay. Any announcements, Peter?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Other than happy Thanksgiving to all.
Okay. So, new business, uh, for A, appointment of Kristen Foodie to Green Communities Committee through June 30th, 2024. And I say, see Kristen's here tonight, you want to come up to the table? So Kristen, if you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this committee, please?
Sure. My name's Kristen Foodie, 83 Central Street. I was the Chair of the Green Energy Committee from 2010, in December 2010 to December 2014. In that period of time, we worked hard to get everything ready to implement the stretch code. I'd like to return to the Board, once again, in an effort to help the people of Millville. It's very simple.
Great. So I have no questions for Kristen, because I know her and know that she would be good at this.
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay. Matthew, okay, great. I'll, do you want to go ahead? No, you make the motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kristen Foodie to the Green Communities Committee through, uh, June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing in our call for the vote, Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much, Kristen.
Thank you so much.
So, and I, let me second. So, and then Kristen, you'd also mentioned that your daughter would also be interested in the Green Committee. Do you want to come up and share? We can't appoint you tonight, because it came in just over the weekend, and so we need a little bit more time. But to save some time, Andrew, would this count for you if she were to speak tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So if you come up tonight, then you won't have to come up when we do the appointing. So if you just want to tell us a little bit about your, introduce yourself, tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the committee?
Hi, I'm Rachel Anderson. Um, I'm interested in kind of helping environmentally, because I am a biology major and a philosophy major. And so it's very important to me to make sure our town, um, not only, you know, keeps our lands relatively safe from pollution and stuff like that, but, um, also we should start with, you know, having cleaner energy, um, that's more efficient.
Biology was my favorite subject. Andrew or Matthew, do you have any questions for Rachel? Okay, so it won't be on the agenda tonight, but we have on the agenda, of course, Rachel, are welcome to come back. Um, and I encourage you to write in email, so that we can review that in the next, why you're interested in things like that. And that would be okay in lieu of your attendance, if you don't want to come to the next meeting for whatever reason. Or whenever you're on the agenda, I can't promise it will be the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you so much, Rachel.
One more thing. You're more than welcome. We have a meeting Wednesday, um, 6 o'clock on Zoom, so you can, you can vote in it, but if you want to attend, you're more than welcome to.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, great.
I think it's great, just if I could, that the Green Committee has become active and there's interest like this.
Yes.
I think it's super and youthful interest.
Yes.
I think that's awesome. Town really needs it.
Yes. Thank you both so much for offering to come forward. And if you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but your obligation in terms of the agenda has been fulfilled. Okay. All right. Sounds good. Okay, um, B, town finances, discussion of potential department needs for FY25. So we'll go through the budget on the actuals through October 31st. So Peter, I'll turn it over to you. Were there any surprises?
Uh, there's no surprises. It's just the things to keep in mind that I look at, you know, are, uh, you know, some of the line items might be varied. If you look at the assessors, you see in there, you know, one item is a negative, but the other item is, uh, hasn't been touched. It's a geography of what goes to the line items. And the key thing we look at are the items that, um, in total for the department, because that's how voters approve them. There's, uh, something in there that might get reclassed for technology support. It was the, you see, there's a minus 2,000 or a charge of 2,000. We now have to pay for, um, Code Red before we got that for, you know, we tagged along with, um, Menden. Now we're paying for it directly. So that was a bill that went through. It's probably misclassified. I think it belongs in the communications budget, but that's just geography again. Um, you see, planning, we haven't really used much of the town planner. We have, we'll be seeing semi-annual invoicing for the intermunicipal agreement. So there's nothing billed on that so far. The Police Department, you'll see retroactive pay will hit in December, um, for the union contract, which you will also be seeing soon, um, in the next meeting or two, probably not by the next meeting, an actual contract to ratify. The town has agreed to the memorandum of agreement with the union on the terms, and you all have, uh, you know, gone through those previously, um, in the executive session. So, um, the, the pay increases will be hitting in December to catch up, and there'll be a slug for retroactive to the beginning of the year. One of the things to point out, you see in the Police Department, page four, the last line item of the budget is capital leases. As you may recall, we've added in an educational piece to the contract, and to pay for that, we're using the capital lease. So that line item's going to go away, basically, in the next budget cycle, um, in order to pay for the education. So the option of providing or purchasing, um, a police cruiser using, um, and, you know, a three-year lease to own, uh, basically goes away as a result. Okay? And we haven't used that in over two budgets, uh, cycles at this point. Um, fire, you know, we need to keep an eye on that, but so far they're tracking pretty well. Things that really bump that up can be unexpected maintenance, and with the older rigs, we've seen that more than once in the past. The other piece to, we did budget for this year at a little hi, at a higher rate, um, but I think it's fair when we get into the budget cycle to be looking more closely at the year-to-date actuals when we get into the budget cycle with the chief and go over his budget and what he's going to need for, um, FY25. In my TA update, I can just hit on it right now. We did have, there was a meeting last week that I sat in on of the Public Safety Committee, and, you know, staffing levels and coverages were discussed, and that has budget ramifications, could have budget ramifications. We don't know what they might be yet. The animal control, you see, nothing's been charged to that on page five. That also is a semi-annual invoicing from Oxbridge for the IMA that we're, intermunicipal agreement we're on. Most of the other budgets are tracking pretty well. We see, we have, uh, in the, on the top of page six, you see Communications. There is a line item for which there's little or no charge. It's Communications Professional Services. In the past, that would be nominal costs that we've had when we were in the Menden-Millville dispatch. We're currently under the Metacoma Dispatch, as you know, and all, for the first three years, all of the charges of our assessment are covered by the State 911 grant. Starting in, after the third year, years four and five, the town will be having to pick up 50% of the actual cost of the assessment, and that's about 60 grand a year. So we're going to have to capture 60 grand, probably in fiscal '25. There's still some question when the meter starts of the three-year period that we, we've been covered by State 911, because the contract year was started January 1st, but the services didn't commence until mid-August. So there's some back and forth, uh, a little bit with Metacoma on that. You'll all, so, but in any event, if it's not FY25, it's soon, there'll be a 60-grand slug for Communications, um, you know, Dispatch that isn't in the budget. So that's 60 grand out of what's going to be available from Proposition 2 and a half, right off the top. Another one that's going to be a larger budget need will be the MES Water, which is the next item down. And that too is, uh, going to be another 60 grand or so if it tracks the same next year, depending on what all happens with MES Water.
So a $60,000 increase of $60,000 total budget?
No, increase on top of what, you know, in other words, it's, so that what was voted at town meeting isn't reflected yet in this budget.
Right, that should be a $100,000 total.
That's correct.
Because we added 52.
We added 52, right. Norfolk Aggie, we have one fewer student than was budgeted, so we'll see a little pickup there. We have no students at Tri-County, so we'll see all of that is available for either free cash, or it'll roll into free cash for next year, or it'll be available for year-end transfer should we need it. Okay? You, you can see on the COA, on the next page, page seven, one of the things is that, you know, the total is tracking pretty well for the COA. They are up against some challenge on the COA van driver, because, you know, they've used 72% of that, uh, line item already. And, you know, there's some, uh, things to consider on that, um, going forward as we look at budgeting for next year. Some of the items that you see in here, for example, um, health insurance, you know, we're tracking a little bit below, um, a third of the year, if you will, but it depends on who's, goes in and who goes out of the plan, and that depends on, you know, we had some police hires and somebody might go on the plan. So we can't control that per se. You see the, a little bit up above on that page, the retirement, 100% of that was paid, that's paid on July 1st of the total year's allocation. So, so 100% of that is used. On our property liability, most of that's paid upfront. Uh, there's one invoice we'll get in January, I think is about when we'll see it, for the Old Town Hall Insurance, and that'll be six grand, five or six grand, I think, is what we expect. So that, that's just, uh, you know, if you have specific questions, we can get into that about these things, but that gives you a rough idea where we are through the first third of the year. Okay? And then I put in there, uh, a copy of last year's guidance memo. So it was issued last January for this FY24. And, you know, something similar will be drafted by me for your review and approval, and I'll hopefully get the, in time for the Finance Committee to review at one of their meetings, to get buy-in of the main budget decision-making bodies of the guidance. But it will have to encompass this 15 grand of the capital lease being used for police education. It'll have to encompass, uh, the 60-grand Metacoma, and it'll have to encompass, um, you know, the 60 grand or thereabouts extra on the MES Water, um, depending on where the tea leaves show on that. So if you're working with 150 grand available from, um, Proposition 2 and 1/2, uh, and you chew up, you know, 2/3 of that, 3/4 of that with two line items, doesn't leave a lot to divvy up, which leads right into your survey.
Yeah.
Types of questions and thinking.
One quick question. So for BMR, they already are at 60%?
Yeah, so they bill us, uh, five invoices a year.
Okay.
And we've paid the first three.
Okay.
Okay?
So that's tracking?
That's tracking, probably.
Okay.
Yep, yep, the invoices are for the 1/5th of the assessment, which is what we budgeted for.
Okay.
And I just saw the bill, it's semi-annual for Norfolk Aggie, and it's, you know, the annual cost is less than what we budgeted.
So anything else on the, the budget guidance? I guess, um...
So that's just for info only, particularly for the new folks, to see how we've done it in the past. And I talked to Claudette of the Finance Committee about it as well today. You know, the budget process is, I'll go out with a guidance memo, right? That you all have looked at and bought into, hopefully, right, in terms of the various things we say. And the town accountant will send out the budget, um, pages for the department heads. They'll return back their budget requests. Those will be compiled. I'll review, I'll review with the various departments as, as I think necessary, and then put in my recommendations, and then you all in the Finance Committee are working from that. And that's consistent with the bylaws for various folks' roles in the process. Okay? Got it?
Okay.
Good.
So anything else on 4B? Otherwise, we can move to 4C, the survey, which was right after. So I thought that we should try to be more, um, specific in our asks. So I'm just going to start at the top, and then we'll do the second part. So in your opinion, what's the most pressing need? Open-ended question. For the question, MES Water, because I think Peter and I updated everyone last time about Mary Jude. So, uh, the May meeting, she talked about being able to get us a grant to cover the expense to tap into Oxbridge, and now she, it's kind of being positioned as, well, what if we gave you a million dollars? So we would still need a million and a half dollars, probably. Like, it might be less, like, maybe there'll be some miracle, and they're like, oh, we can do this for a million. I'm not hopeful on that, but, um, we're guessing at least a million and a half more, um, to do that. If we don't get, we're looking at total, let me put it this way, the total project we're looking at is about 2.5 million dollars. So whatever we don't get from, um, Mass DEP, we would have to fund that ourselves. So I think we should have a question around, would you support up to a 1.5 million-dollar debt exclusion to pay for the Millville Elementary School to tap into Oxbridge Water? But if anyone has any other ideas on how to phrase that better, or what a better question might be, I am all ears.
Well, I, I don't want to ask for an override, for many reasons. One is, we have undocumented people coming in this country daily, getting better benefits than our seniors get. Number one. Number two, the state and federal government steals money from us every week in our paycheck. They give a tiny fraction of it back and want us to bow and thank them. Give us our money back. Let us handle it, because I think we can do a much better job.
So you wouldn't support the debt exclusion for the MES Water?
Debt exclusion, I will. I'll borrow money.
Okay.
But I will not ask for an override. I won't.
That's okay.
And I, I just strongly believe that the state and federal governments do not have the best interests of the towns and cities at hand.
So I'm not asking for an override either. I'm kind of taking the temperature on what people think about an override.
I could tell you the temperature in Millville. We have a high, high rate of, of seniors.
Yeah.
And that's my concern.
Yeah. Nope, I, I don't disagree. So do we think the debt exclusion, 1.5 million dollars, is the right question to ask? Would you support a debt? Yeah, sure, Jerry, do you want to come to the table?
Oh, sure. You're if in 47 Grove Street. Just a couple of questions concerning the amount of money that you've quoted. Is that fact, or is that just a, we think, or is that something that...
That's a reasonable guess that we put together with Mass DEP, because if you look at every mile of, um, piping you need to put down, it's roughly a million dollars. That's for a 2-inch pipe. We were suggested an 8-inch pipe, which would increase the cost. We'd also require a pumping station, which is roughly half a million dollars.
You were talking from, from Oxbridge coming across.
Oxbridge, yeah, down Kempton, down that way.
Kempton coming across that way.
So it's about 1.4 miles, so that's 1.4 million. And then...
Along the road?
Yep. It's 1.4 along the roads, yes. And then half a million for the pumping station, and then we put in some wiggle room of about 600,000, if there's kit granite or bedrock or anything like that, which...
There is.
It's likely.
Well, it's likely. Uh, you said a 6-inch pipe?
I think, 6 inch, or was it 8-inch?
So 8-inch, yeah.
8-inch, okay, sorry, 8-inch.
But we are, and just to follow up, we are having an engineer do a preliminary...
Yeah.
...survey, and, you know, in my MES Water update, we'll talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
Survey in terms of...
So it's not a hard, and, and a, and a rough estimate of what it might cost, depending on size of pipe. So we, so I even heard 12-inch pipe might be on the table.
Okay.
We'll see.
And that would further increase the cost above.
So just out of curiosity, in terms of the size of pipe, Peter, um, does that then allow for the housing?
Yes.
Along the way to cut in?
Yeah, so, uh, just, Oxbridge is, uh, very cooperative and happy to be working with us on this, and it serves their interests too, uh, with Mass DEP. One of the things that they would want is more customers. They'd prefer to have more than just the one customer of MES.
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
They would like to be able to provide service to folks along the way, too.
Yeah, yeah. So that'd be an 8-inch pipe?
Eight, it's an eight or more inch pipe.
8 to 12.
Uh-huh, okay. And, um...
We think.
So the, the preliminary numbers, then, that you've got, the, just, the Kentucky windage, and what you're looking for here, Peter, is for this gentleman or...
An engineering firm is doing an evaluation, is working with Oxbridge to find out what, and, and, you know, GIS mapping and all that sort of thing.
Good, okay. So we could expect something more definitive in what timeframe?
Possibly by the end of the year.
I just, end of the summer.
Just started going.
Good. The reason I ask these questions is, obviously, that's key, you know, it's to what you should or shouldn't do some of these things relative to what it is that, that the potential cost is going to be.
Yeah.
As you said, we've got a situation where we don't have people with a lot of money, especially the amount of seniors that we have.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a fairly big bite.
Substantial project.
Talking a $7 million budget, you're talking 1.5 million dollars. That is a huge bite.
It's significant.
Yep. And it's a significant one, uh, for the school and for anybody that's cutting along, but it is pretty key. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, and if we wanted, to Jerry's point, if we want to hold this survey and put it out in January to wait for that number, I have no issues with that either.
I would.
Okay.
I think we have...
I guess, that's what my point was. I wasn't trying to be wise. I am saying, what's the real number?
No, 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 it's okay. Yeah.
And if we can get a better handle on the number, I have a better understanding of it, so I can make a determination as to what I would vote on.
Yeah.
Just, to me, it makes more sense, you know?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, and then do you require the Millville Elementary School to be part of the school district long-term? Would you support removing the elementary school from the school district? Have that bill available for other uses by the town? And then, if we have a deficit, would you prefer overriding to trim costs? If you want to trim costs, let us know where. So that's kind of like the more broader questions. And then, I haven't gotten feedback, and this might be another reason to hold, because I did send this to department heads, but not until Saturday. I meant to send it on Wednesday, and I just forgot. So I did it on Saturday. Um, but I have some more specific numbers to each of the departments. I have a $535,000 total for an override. So for the police, I estimated 125,000. That would put the whole budget at about 800,000. Firefighters, I put $100,000 increase. That would put it about 425. As we spoke last meeting, it could make sense to regionalize the fire department, even with Blackstone, there were some savings there at all levels. I put an increase, and I'll come back if anyone from the department head wants to comment. So I put 10,000 to the library, because it seems like they'd say, you know, even with just a little bit more, they could do more. Um, an increase of 10,000 to the senior center. 7,000 for highway, 75,000, sorry, for highway, 40,000 for the town hall, 150,000 to the school. And I did send this to Dr. DeFalco as well, and he's like, look, I'm not going to have it real. I don't know how good that number is. It could be good, it could be bad. We won't really know until January. So that might be another reason to wait. And then I put an annual contribution to stabilization of 25,000, just so we continue to build that up, because we do typically have a deficit, and so we need a savings account for when we have a rainy day. And then I just left it as other suggestions. So before I invite anyone from the audience up, does anyone from the table have any comments? Big fat no from Roland. I know that.
I made my comments.
You did. Thank you. I appreciate it.
We shouldn't be scrambling for money, as I said.
So I guess, so...
It's a big problem. We don't have a revenue problem, we have a distribution problem, and it starts at the federal.
So I guess, I don't know how to fix that problem, though, for Millville, Roland. How would I fix that? How would I get more money so that we don't have to do that?
More...
No, thank you.
More people got to speak out like I do, because I'm not afraid to. We have that, we have that First Amendment, freedom of speech.
Yeah. I just want to go around the table first, Pat, if you don't mind.
So, I mean, these increases, all in total, what would that even do to the taxes at this point?
So five, it's 535,000. I haven't done the math on it yet. If you do rough and tough numbers, like, because we have, so we have 1,100 homes, roughly?
Roughly, yeah.
So if you did 535 divided by 1,100, oops, hold on, let me do it the right way. Oops, that was wrong. It wasn't, I'm hit at times. The number got really big.
Yeah, that one.
Um, it would be about $500 a year.
Okay. And then we have the school trying to redo its buildings.
Yeah.
And then we have the water.
Yep.
We would tax ourselves out of existence.
It would be high.
Yeah. We'd be out of existence at that point.
You have seniors that are on, you know, Social Security that get, what, a negative half a percent increase every year?
Right.
You know? With the inflation lately, you've probably got a negative 10% in the last three or four years.
I mean...
So how do they swallow that? And I'm not too far behind.
And even if...
I'm pushing 60. So I'm not too far from Social Security myself.
And even if people are working, what kind of increases are they getting compared to the inflation rate?
Yeah.
I mean, nobody's, nobody's getting any more money, and we're going to...
Oh, very fair.
So...
That's all, I'm not proposing this, I just wanted to take the temperature, because I think you see a lot of chatter on social media.
Yep.
We need more money, we need more money. This is the only way for us to really get more money, because we are spending every single penny we have, and even pennies we don't have, because we're typically dipping into free cash and things like that. So, but I'm absolutely willing to put this question to everyone, hey, would you like an override? This is how we can improve things. That's what's required.
Something helpful that would be good to maybe add is like an addendum, because of each project, to see what that would be actually, like, for the average household to increase their taxes.
What it would be.
Because that way you get a better idea, because...
Yeah, that's a good point. Maybe we, um...
These increases aren't sustainable for anybody.
Yep. Okay. Matthew, anything for you before I go to the audience?
No, I just think the more narrow we are with our scope of these increases, I think the better it will be. So definitely need the input. No, I just think the more narrow we are with our scope of these increases, I think the better it will be, so definitely need the input.
Okay. Pat, do you want to come up to the table?
Sure. Pat Ben, 47 Grove Street. I just had a comment on the survey, and I think it's a great idea to put on what it would have, how it would affect every household, but also on the items that you suggested. I would think if we could give more information, like, I think it was 175, you said, for the police, what would that?
125, yeah.
125, what could they do with that? How is that going to benefit the town, and how much for the highway? What is that going to do for them? I think senior center, we already know.
Van.
Yeah, you're looking at the van, you know where that's going to go. Library, I can't speak to, but if people that get this survey have more information and have those kind of facts, then they can make a better decision on how they want to go with it as well.
Okay. That's another reason to hold it back, to give them another chance.
Absolutely, absolutely, thanks.
Great. Did anyone, sure, Larry, come on up?
Larry Pearson, 17 Grant Circle. I haven't been involved in the water discussion, but wouldn't it be closer to get the water from Blackstone? Blackstone is closer to the middle, the elementary schools than Oxbridge.
So the difference is, um, .4 miles, so it's actually not...
Really, no?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
That's it. And they have not been as amenable to work with us as Oxbridge was, like, yay, we can't wait to talk to you.
All right.
The Blackstone...
We already have into relationships with Oxbridge for water anyway.
All right. It just, in my mind, it seems like...
It does seem closer, but it's only about .4 miles.
Just to address Roland's point, we need, he's right, there's so much waste in Washington. We need better communication with our federal representatives, our congressmen, and I know it got redistricted now, isn't it?
Yeah, we have Jake Akinblass now, and he's already, he did come and meet.
He's been here. I mean, that's where the pressure's going to be, because that's where the money is, you know?
Yeah.
Just, just a thought on that.
Nope, that's perfect, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on the survey, or any of, anything else?
Jerry?
Jerry, sure, you can come back up.
Ah, that man. Hi, Pete. How you doing? Good, 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 good to see you. All right, 535,000, I think, is what your total is?
Yes.
That'd be the difference of the police, fire department, the rest we talked about, correct?
Yes.
Is that a number that is based on some factor that you came up with? In other words, you didn't just pull that out of the air, you said, hey, they need ABCD, and therefore it should be a buck twenty-five for the police?
So I looked at, like, that would give them two, roughly, two new police officers, and Chief Coop always talks about staff. So that was a, I mean, it was a, it's my guess, that I have not gotten input from Chief Coop yet, because like I said, I just sent this on Saturday. So I, it's an educated guess, but it's not from Chief Coop. I haven't heard anything from Chief Lillard either. I'm not...
On the firefighter side.
On the firefighter side, yeah.
So the hundred grand were not true, he could be 150, he could be 25?
Yep.
Okay. Library, they're here, I'm sure they can speak to it.
For the COA, I was thinking van rides, like, if they had 10,000 more dollars for the van rides, that would really help them there.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Okay.
Seventy-five for the highway?
Yep, so to be honest, that's probably a lot less than what he would want, so we'll see.
Seventy-five going to do a hell of a lot for you, is it?
So, well, yeah, well, I was thinking between chapter ninety and that, every other year, so...
Come on, you're not going to get much with seventy-five grand.
No, it's true. So in Blackstone, he gave me, a while ago, he gave me that as an example. So Blackstone puts 800,000 a year into the highway for road repairs. So that's like 10% of our budget.
Yeah. Few more roads out, too, right?
Yep.
They got a lot more miles.
You got more miles.
They do have a lot more miles, so, I mean, so what was, I mean, I don't know. We'd have to get an educated guess, so I'll try to get that from him, but yeah.
Okay, so really what we got here is 535,000, of which you have some, at least some thinking on it, some gassing on it, and some need for information that still needs to be coming in on it, right?
They're good guesses, but they could all be wrong, because they are guesses, I guess, let me put it that way.
And I, I agree with you again on the idea that we need to get something that is more firm before you put a survey out, so that has some distinct possibility of enlightening people as to the exact cost. The only other thing you said, you mentioned, if someone has another idea of how to, how to help out in the revenue side of things, or do some things that could help out the town. I still insist, and I've been insisting this for quite some time, you need a grant writer. A dedicated grant writer, someone that can come in here, not someone that just does it occasionally, because someone says, hey, take a look and see what's up. You need someone that's dedicated, that constantly searches through things. It's not just a, one of 11 things I do this morning, it is the thing I do this morning. You need to get a grant writer in here. A grant writer can help this town out tremendously.
Okay.
And we've been advocating for a grant writer for a long time. You've got some opera funds available, you've got some monies that are on the sidelines that we never had before, and we never had the monies to be able to do it before. Now you do. You're looking for that interim period between now and when the schools are going to be advocating for more funding because of a variety of different things. I think Angela has mentioned, I don't know, five or six different things that we're all going to need monies on. But I think the one thing that's consistent here that can help is a grant writer. So I would sincerely suggest that you take a look at that grant writer on that. And, you know, the file...
Do you know how much that person would make in a year?
Pardon?
Because then I'd bump up the town hall number for that number.
Well, yeah, I mean, do I know what they would go for? I don't know the exact number now. I know we, we first got one ourselves, was seventy-five grand.
A year?
Yeah. Of which 43 of it was paid for through the grants themselves. So it actually came out to a roughly $35,000 total. You can get grant writers that will come in, advocate for it, and will write themselves into those grants that are, not all grants have that in it.
Yeah.
So you, we used to call, you get a hired gun. And they actually come in, and if whatever they can get out of the grant, they'll put into the grant to help offset their salary. Our goal was to try to get them to offset their entire salary, but pretty close a couple of times.
Fifty percent is great.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a wonderful, if I can get someone to do that as a regular job every day, for 35 or 40 grand, that's, I think that's pretty good. You can get somebody at McDonald's for that, I think, for goodness sakes. As far as the numbers go on the 535, if, for instance, you ask for that and say, this is going to be your, your override. If the answer to that override is no, does that mean, is it thinking then that the 535 would have to come out of the budget that you have?
No, this was just, so, part of my strategy on that number as well, is there was an override put forth a couple of years ago. It was, first it was 1.8 million, then it was a million, and then it was 880,000, and all those failed. So looking at that guidance, I was trying to be like 750,000 or less, because I think that would be something that people would actually maybe seriously consider, like, gee, that doesn't sound so awful. Maybe we, maybe we can't afford that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess where I come back on this is that I'm looking for financial stability for the town over time. Whether it feels good, doesn't sound good, people don't like it, there's a reality to the situation, that if something costs a dollar, you can't buy it for 85 cents.
Yep.
And people just got to start realizing that. The costs of what you talk about for that pipeline, that cost is going up, as you probably know, from construction. It's going every week.
Yeah.
I mean, it's incredible, the amount of money that's spent on just copper or whatever else piping and so forth, they need, it's incredible. So my concern is that you're going to spin yourself, as Angela has said, you're going to spin yourself right out of a situation here.
Yep.
You need to get a grant writer, you need to take a look at this. My question was, does that 535,000, that ensure you a longevity of a budget for three to five years out? Or is it just a flip of the coin for next year?
So...
We don't have, do we have a plan, fiscal plan going forward for three years?
I personally would not put, after we did this one override, I wouldn't keep putting them forward again and again. That's just not, this would be like, if this is what people approve, then we would have to manage to this number is how.
But if the...
That's my opinion, and that's just mine, I don't know.
No, I guess, and not to believe it, and I'll let, I'll stop, but there comes a point where there's a point of diminishing returns. If you put in that amount of money, and it isn't going to do the trick, then all you're going to do is spin yourself, as Angela said, you're going to spin yourself out of the game again. So I'd prefer to either take a look at what is the reality of what we really need? How do we solve it based on certain types of issues, be it a grant writer or some other things up, somebody smarter than I can come up with? And be able to look at this, it's not a, where everybody accepted, but what is necessary to keep the town alive? I'm more concerned about the town, and I want everybody here to participate in the town, but you can't do it if you only get 85 cents and you got a dollar cost. You, you can't do it. So it's just a couple of thoughts that I think...
No, I...
It needs to be thought about that way.
I agree, so I don't disagree with that, I'm trying to think about what, what people would approve and...
Well, politically, politically...
Yeah.
Achievability...
Yeah.
Is one idea.
Yeah.
But if political achievability is only 85 cents, and you need a dollar, it's not going to work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that's good comments.
I mean, to, like, to comment on his increase in construction daily, it's, and it's, it's not a joke. Back, back 10 years ago, I would get quotes from vendors for material, and it, and it would tell you right on there, good for 90 days. Now I get some precious metals, copper, aluminum, stainless steel, 24 hours.
Oh, oh my God, that's crazy!
Then it might be a week, next month it could be a week, then it's back to 24 hours, and that's all because of the oil.
Yeah, yeah, oh wow.
The oil, what they're doing to us with oil is destroying this country. We need, we need to buy, drill our own, refine our own, like we were doing. And that's, that's killing the cost, so now, and then, but wood is, is affected, because diesel, fuel is needed for every process of milling trees into lumber to build a house. It takes diesel to get the tree out of the woods, to cut the tree, to deliver the tree as, as lumber to your property, diesel. The stuff they don't want us using anymore.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's crazy.
Okay. So I think the main message is, let's hold off until we get something more firm, more accurate numbers. So why don't we revisit this in January, but in the meantime, if all of you want to take a look, do you have, do you have any other inputs, any other changes? Any other thoughts, ideas? Yes, what I'm struggling with is, like, if we put this out and said, what do you want? It would easily, I think it would probably be double this number. It'd probably be over a million dollars.
Yeah.
But from the, what would vote, and what would people pass, I don't think that would pass, so then it's like, we'll just keep chugging along the way we're chugging along. And perhaps we could fund a grant writer for a year or two out of stabilization, to see how that works.
We have somebody devoting a fair amount of her time...
To grant writing?
To grant writing, as you know, ARPA, in this area.
Oh, that's right.
But I will say, just on the overall picture, just because of the lead-in, what I was trying to get across is, if you use Proposition Two and a Half, you've got 150 grand available. And 120 of that's going to go right off the top.
You have 30,000 to place.
Before you get into the increases that are demanded by the various things, and we already know that the school will, absent some adjustment for facilities and staffing to enrollment, continue on. We know that they're facing some pretty significant increases contractually, as well as, because their funding sources have dried up from their ESRS and things like that, that they've used to help offset. And so we know, we've been forewarned that their needs are going to be significant, and we already saw that when the guidance last year was 3%, and they came in at 8% at BMR. We also don't know the headcounts that we're likely to be dealing with at these, at the BVTs, at the Norfolk Aggies, and the tri-counties of the world, and those can swing things quite significantly on us as well. So all of those will come out of, you know, there's going to be, you know, I'll be crafting the guidance for early January, and that might be further informing you all about the issues raised in the guidance memo that influence what realities are that you're looking for in this survey. Because that, because you're really looking, it sounds like you're really looking for an appetite of, you're, you're helping to let people know that there's challenges, and you're going to have to pay for them, or not. And if you're not, then we, decisions have to be made.
And let's not forget either, when you have, you need a million and a half dollar increase, or 750,000, right? It's not really divided by 1,100.
Right.
Because if, and, and if, if there's a senior that has no more increases in their pay anymore, but their house is worth near, near a million dollars, because they have a lot of land, a nice house that they worked 50, 60 years to...
To have.
To have.
Yeah.
Now they have no mortgage, but all of a sudden their taxes, they probably wish they had a mortgage instead of their taxes.
Yeah.
You know? I know I do. So, so theirs is going to go shoot up to the sky. And then, you know, other, other houses that, that are worth, you know, you know, the average of 350, 400,000 are going to have a lot less increase. So you're going to have some seniors that are going to be having an 8, 900 dollar increase a year, and some people are going to have two...
Two, 300. Yeah.
Okay, that's scary.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, I would amend one thing, I don't think the average is only, is 300 or even close to that.
No, not anymore.
It's like 450 to 550, because of the housing market.
Yeah.
It's funny, I've been buying the same exact type of truck since 1987, and I was going through old papers, and I found my 87 truck that I bought, was fully loaded, all kinds of gadgets, because when you're 20, 21 years old, you got to have everything. It was $17,000. That same truck today, which is why I have an old truck, is 100,000.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Tina, did you want to say something?
Yes. What I wanted to say was, I have somebody who works with me on the tax work-off program, and she is a grant writer, or that's one of her things, so that might be something for you to use.
That's a great suggestion.
She wouldn't be, they're not available until January, because we'll be doing the new year, but she's just helped me recently with the grant for the van and for nutrition programs. So I'm hoping that I'll get those grants at the beginning of December, so...
No, that's great information. I'll make, Peter will connect with you on that person's name. And so, Peter, and you mentioned we have some, a grant writer as well?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, I don't want to say we don't use a grant writer, we do, I know, and then this person's also...
A limited resource has other work, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yes. Please, just because people complain they can't hear on the tape, on the recording.
So occasionally. One other suggestion, and you just might, you might consider it with a marketing background, too. This town is really difficult to get a lot of participation in, as I know you know. We might want to get, for the survey when it's ready, if you really want to get a true understanding of what the people want, and in all of the different areas of the town, is to get some kind of a boots-on-the-ground movement going with volunteers, to drop them off door-to-door, and whether it takes five minutes for them to fill it out, because it's that important with the growth, for the growth of the town and where we're going to go.
Yep.
I mean, we've done that in the past to get people to come to town meetings, and that's knocking on the door and spending a few minutes, and it may not just be this group, but to get volunteers, get other people that are willing, that want to help the town, but don't necessarily step up and do so. But that would be a suggestion.
Yeah, so I put on this one this year to call the town hall, and I could pick it up, too. Like, I would, I would go to someone's house and get it for them.
Yeah.
If they don't want to drop it off, if they don't want to leave, or something like that, so...
I'm just finding a hard thing is that not very many people actually go on the Facebook pages. A few will watch cable. You see what happens at town meetings, it's just really difficult to shake them up. I can't tell you how many neighbors say, what's happening with this, or what's happening with that? And they really...
Yeah, it's new information, and you're like, this has been going on forever!
Well, it's frustrating.
I know.
And I'm sure you're all frustrated with it, but if you really want to get a feel for the town, and not just, and I don't know how many you got last time, but I'm assuming...
We got 62 last time.
Which is a percent of registered voters.
Out of 3,000 people, out of registered voters, there's 2,000, say 2,000, rough and tough, it might be 2,200, but, so yeah, we get 60.
So it's not a good percent.
It used to be like 10% was a really successful marketing campaign, if you got that, and you know what? Boy, we'd love to see that, you know, love to see what people really want, and give them a chance, but you, you have to ask them around here.
Yeah.
And the only way to do that is really to sit right in front of them, so just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, we can definitely do that. I wouldn't mind spending a Saturday afternoon knocking on doors, people would be like, now she's coming to my house! I wish she'd go away!
We average 100 people for town meeting. We, we should be filling a football stadium. You know, we should be using the, the field at BMR, having an outside if all 2,000 people would show up.
We won't let them have the senior center until I fill out the survey, how's that?
Perfect. They'll call out, we have a hostage crisis! They won't let us out!
It's unfortunate that...
It's just going to take participation, and everybody doing it, you know, working on it, so...
Okay. Anything else? Anyone, anyone? Okay. So I guess for the board of selectmen, think about it, too, will we maybe do one more review in December, if we have data from the engineering firm? So that we can, because I, you know, I want us to vote and approve it before we send it out. And just to be clear, this is like the board of selectmen are advocating one way or the other on an override. It's more to kind of educate people that these, these are the gaps. Like, if you want the senior center to be able to give everyone a van ride, there's not enough money for that. If you want the library to be open more hours and have more resources, there's just not enough money for that. So we fund, we give you everything we can with the money that we have.
And there, and there's another thing. If the seniors could afford an override, then they wouldn't have to worry about a senior van, they'd call Uber and pay for it.
Yeah.
So if they can't afford Uber, they can't afford an override.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we need to approve the, um...
Do we need, this isn't for approval?
That's just info only, no, that's last year's version.
Oh, actually, on this, I was wondering, when we provide budget guidance, should we give people a number? And what I mean by that is, so, and I'm going to, I'm going to pick on the schools, just because we usually do. Like, for the school, what's the number?
So we gave percent increases.
No, but, so it says it's 3.73, there are 3,736,845 dollars is the total budget for BMR Regional. Should we say this, like, you need to manage to a 3.8 million dollar number? Or, actually, no, that's not even it, that would be 72,000 dollars, that'd be way over. Should we say you need to manage to 3, 3,750,000? You get 14 grand, like...
I mean, we can consider that, I mean, here, the key is how we stick to the, how you stick to the guns, because I give the guidance, if you remember the process last year, it gave you a, a balanced budget with, but before we had the certified number from BMR. And when we got the cer, and...
And then it wasn't balanced.
Certified, then it wasn't balanced, because they went from the 3% guidance, which can be equated to a number as well, hard number. And, but their needs were at 8% level of an increase, so the, the, the follow-on would be how, how hard you go at the nature of the need. And, you know, that's, that's a challenge for political will as well, I would say, right? So I think when faced with the realities where I describe 120 grand off the top is going to likely go away...
Yep.
Out of 150 available, political will is going to have to be stronger.
Yes.
To hold people to a number or a percent increase. And what we've historically done is percent increases of salaries and level funding of everything else, unless specific items can be justified or supported by contractual obligations and so forth. And so that's the general... And so that's the general approach that has worked to keep us within budget. This last year, we had to tap into free cash. We don't know what our free cash level will be yet. And I don't expect they will be at a-
$400,000 level again.
$400,000 level again. Correct. So there's that.
What do you think? Do you think we should give budget, like, give each department, like, this is really all we can give you? Like, this is, like, this is the number you need to be in?
You almost have to.
Like, you need, like, you need to figure it out. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to do.
The, the other thing I would suggest is even if the budget, like, a line item isn't getting increased to justify it, to make sure that we're actually spending it because we need to, not just because it's been there. We need to make sure that's for all budgets. Um, because, I mean, it's great to know why you're increasing, but some, why are you keeping them too? Because sometimes things change, so we need to make sure, keeping up on that, so.
Okay. Who, maybe Peter put this again for, like, the meet, first meeting in December, and we should maybe revisit that.
So I'll draft it, I'll draft something up for the next meeting, okay? That accomplishes what this does, that you can review, and that would, like, and then you can, we can edit it or whatever. And then get it over the finance committee for their input as well.
Okay.
Because it'd be nice to have both bodies on the same page. And then if you toe the line, that's the other part of it, right?
Yeah. Okay. All right, so I'm going to move on from the survey. Why went through it twice? Okay. So old business, MES water status update. So Peter has a good email for us.
Uh, yep, I changed the email. So the water testing results, I, I made a mistake of the wrong file, got copied for your packet apparently. But so in front of you, you have the results for October. So these are official results of the HAA 5, the halocetic acid challenge. It's, it came in at 41, and the threshold is 60, so it's below the threshold. And for the other one, which is the total trihalomethanes, the threshold's 80, and it came in at 57. So we had a good official mass DEP test result for October. The test result was taken for November a week ago. We don't have the results in like we have here. But what I'm told by Dr. Gulick is typically, uh, the results are known by the, the testing facility within a week, and they typically will raise a red flag if something exceeds. So the point is, no news is good news. It's not perfect yet. We don't know exactly. And so we'll know maybe by, it should be by next meeting how November came in. And maybe we'll have Dr. Gulick here at that meeting as well, because we've been asked to go to the school the week, you know, a week or so later.
December 14th.
14th, right?
So the school invited us. They sent us an email on November 6th. I just responded today. I apologize, because I honestly thought I responded already, but just, um, so I let them know that we will be there with Dr. Gulick. I don't know if anyone else wants to attend, but you're more than welcome. If there's going to be three of us, we need to-
I'll post, yeah.
Post a meeting so that we don't get any issues.
Yep. The other part of MES water update is just that I did meet with the folks from Oxbridge, the town manager, their DPW director. And we also had our, our engineers on this project. Because the engineers need to, needed to connect with the folks in Oxbridge to get a sense of what their capability is, and then evaluate what needs to happen between Oxbridge and MES and what might happen along the way. So that, that process has begun by the engineering firm. It was great. And they, later, the engineer, engineering firm and the DEP, uh, I met with DEP and the folks from Oxbridge DPW in a, just a conference call that I wasn't invited to, nor was Steve Setty, the town manager, because we wouldn't have added any value, quite frankly. But it was just to ensure that the, our engineer has good relationships with DEP, and that's a good thing. And one of the reasons, additional reasons why the Blackstone solution is not the ideal solution for us is that DEP's funding really relates to interest in seeing the Millville-Oxbridge solution happen, not a Millville, some, somebody else's solution. So their likely funding that might come, whether it's a million bucks, we don't know yet, or not, is in part driven by the fact that there's problems in Oxbridge that are being solved that are helped to be solved by joining up with Millville and solving the MES water problem. And Blackstone, when we did meet with them, were clear they didn't really have the capacity at the time. And so there might have been a need for a well to be built or a dug at the cost of the town of Millville to join up on their water. So I think the Oxbridge solution is the right way to go and for many reasons. Okay?
Okay. Yes, sir?
Here's the question. Pete, is Dr. Gulick involved in knowing what the water in Oxbridge, how the, whatever those words he always used, of testing of the water, that the Oxbridge water is good?
He-
In other words, he's been our consultant on this, has he not? He's been the guy that we go, he's our go-to guy.
Yes.
I would assume that you'd want to make sure our go-to guy also is going to, and understanding that the water testing from Oxbridge is a good water coming in. And find out we got a problem with something later downstream.
That's right. And Oxbridge has a, has a challenge, and that's part of what the mass DEP involvement is all about, is to deal with the PFAS. This is really, PFAS is really providing the funding, if you will. Meeting PFAS challenges is, has a lot of funding available. That's what DEP is really using here. And so we, Oxbridge knows they have a challenge to be solved as part of their end of the project, to provide us good water, good quality water with meeting PFAS thresholds that are likely to be set in place in the future.
Are those the new, the new, uh, the PFAS is a new-
Yeah, that's the big challenge.
That's the new one that's coming up?
That's coming up, but is not yet determined.
Right, 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 right.
Well, now the threshold is 20 parts per trillion, and they may change that.
To four.
To four.
To four?
Yeah. Parts per trillion.
Per trillion?
Per trillion.
Yes.
So zero. Basically zero.
Well, nobody will meet that.
If you've seen the movie Dark Waters, it's fascinating. It was a really good movie.
Yeah. And to take the sample, someone cannot have clothes on that were, had used fabric softener.
Yeah. Or a dryer sheet, because it's in there.
It will taint the PFAS specimen collection results. Imagine that?
PFAS is in 98% of living or something. If you watch this movie, Dark Waters, so it talks about, like, it's now in 98% or something crazy. I shouldn't give the exact number. It's in a very high, a shockingly high percentage of living organisms, like, it's just in you.
So you're better off not washing your clothes?
Rainwater, rainwater.
Yeah.
Don't use soap.
So it was fascinating movie. Okay. Anything else on MES water? Okay.
Nope.
Um, boss appointment policy draft amended for three-year appointment after probation period. So this, Peter, over to you.
Yep. So just i- i- in the minutes review that you have later in the packet, it was comment that there was a slight appointment policy modification that needed to be done. This is it. And all it is, is the, the sentence that's in italics, where you had the, you wanted to put in there that you all could appoint someone for longer than a year if you've been satisfied with their performance, and you can make them a three-year appointment instead of a annual.
The electrical inspector, like, he's been here forever.
Right.
Why are we doing him every year?
So I just drafted that wording for this already existing appointment policy to supplement and allow you that flexibility. That works for you, you should vote to approve that. I also added, uh, town administrator or his, her designee in terms of sending out notices, like Diane Lockwood assists with that often and so forth.
Okay. Anyone have any concerns or questions around this? We did discuss this previously. Okay. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, appointment policy as presented.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Peter.
You?
Okay. Um, next is police play, police station playground discussion. So we were talking about getting a grant to turn it into something else, and we've been, like, waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting for grants. And in the meantime, that eyesore is just there forever, and it's terrible. So I thought we should just move forward with something, whether we even just rip it all out and kind of make it like a, just a plain area, like a dirt grass slash grass area with nothing in it until we figure out what we really want to do, or if we want, just want to move forward with the basketball court, which I'm fine with. So I don't know.
That costs money.
We set aside money for it.
$17,000.
In the ARPA, right?
That'll be a $30,000 job.
Okay.
All day long.
Okay.
First of all, it's on top of a leach field, so you got to do special preparations.
The leach field's not there. So I met with Brian Malali, and he told me that the leach field is under where the garden is right now. And it's right directly behind. That's what he said.
Okay. Well-
So we should, we need to confirm that some-
A community garden will be very cheap.
I don't mind doing a community garden instead, if you guys want to do that, if we want to make a vote and just-
The last playground, I never saw it used, hardly ever that I see people using it. And look at where it is today, because we couldn't afford to maintain it.
Yeah, it's not nice at all.
So.
Well, what is there else?
Community garden.
Fine with community garden.
You know?
I can reach out to Kate.
Officer Lanigan said, you know, what if, what if there was, this is his vision, that there's a gazebo in the middle. You put a solar panel on the roof, and it, and it gives you a light for inside the gazebo. Now, it's lit up for security at night, or if somebody wants to just go sit there at night with a cup of coffee and a muffin or something, you know? And have a conversation with a friend, right? Um, that, the community garden, whether they're planting flowers or produce.
Yeah.
And it'd be a better thing to see when people drive into town to the police station-
What they're doing now, for sure.
And say, "Holy crap, where am I?" Or, "Jeez, this looks like a nice town." What do you want to hear, you know? Um, and that will be a low cost.
Okay.
One, one fee of a, of a gazebo, places like Skip's up in Sutton, they carry them. They're right there. And you can get them for a lot less than $17,000.
Okay.
I mean, I would volunteer my equipment and time to, to remove what's in there. The town's got dump trucks. We could fill the dump trucks and haul the stuff out.
I'm good with that. Is that what, I don't, I don't have any, I, I just want it to not be a wreck like it is right now.
Right.
So, and, um-
And then the basketball court's going to need a lot of maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a good volunteering thing too, because I know, like, national honor societies and student councils, like, they send out kids to go do volunteering hours at, like, cleanups for cemeteries and stuff like that. So doing that here too, that'd be a good way to get younger people again.
Somebody that's looking for their Eagle Scout.
Hmm.
You know?
Okay. Andrew, do you have any?
I like-
Any one with the other? Okay, great. So then I think the next step would be I-
I'll do it all first.
Yeah, well, no, for sure. So let me talk with, I will reach out to Kate, because she runs the community garden. I went there and helped with, like, some winterizing thing one time. She always asks, I, I'm not a good person growing things. If the big one hits and we have to grow our own food, the gills will be starving. Um, like, that's what's happening.
Well, that garden they have is, looks like they work hard at it.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's not in the best spot in the world.
Yeah, no, for sure. So I'll ask her about interest in that, and then I guess, what do we, how do we go about ripping it up? Do we just vote out, we want to rip it up, or what's the?
I think we have to do a vote, because it's equipment there that, well, and it, and that equipment can be brought to, to heavy metal on one socket.
Okay.
And they, they purchase it from you as scrap. You know, you don't get a lot, but you get some.
Okay. So then, all right, so this is, so why don't, if we make a motion to move forward with the community garden project, and then I think, Peter, you'd email Kevin to maybe organize with scrap and highway? And then we'd find a day where we could all volunteer?
And I would vote to make it, the Officer Lanigan, community garden.
Okay.
It was his idea. He grabbed me.
Okay.
I went to the station to pick up my, my license to carry permit for-
Yep.
And he grabbed me for that.
Oh, nice.
Well, he said, "While you're here."
Okay.
So I present this in his behalf.
Okay. So looking for a motion?
Wait, Jerry's got one question, I think.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, Jerry.
That's right. I'm just curious, um, didn't we have, uh, what's the fellow's name that lives up behind us?
John Gibson?
John Gibson, take a look at that. He's the septic gentleman that-
I don't know. I don't remember.
Yes, he was, we did. He, he, he was unable to find, so we still don't know where the leaching field is.
I guess it's my concern before you move forward in doing something, and I hate to see one of your machines fall through a-
But you're not, you're not going to dig that deep, are you? You're just going to pull away, pull stuff away.
The point is, I think, I think we, you should probably know what's there before you start digging it up or even taking the, um, you know, the, the base of the equipment out. You should probably have some idea that if someone says, "Well, I think it's back here," someone says, "I thought it's in front." I was always told it was underneath, underneath the park when we put it in. We were there when we put it in. So I don't, I'm just not sure where it is, to be frank. It's the police station one and the one in back, and it's the town hall, the one in the front.
Correct.
There's no way to-
The guy you're talking about, we've had a professional in who-
John Gibson, is that?
Couldn't find it.
Yeah. We had a professional come in, that's what Peter was just saying. He came in and couldn't.
And couldn't find it?
Couldn't conclusively locate.
Couldn't tell us where it was.
Peter, would there be a, a map, you know?
There's nothing at the border hill.
There should be, there should be a drawing in the border hill somewhere.
It has built somewhere.
It doesn't exist.
Right? Has to be, right? It's one of the faults of this town.
Doesn't exist. We've tried. We've exhausted the effort to figure out where it is.
You know what I mean? It wasn't a school or a-
Did we check our storage? Was it packed away there somewhere?
I had border health look at everything.
Okay, yeah.
You can ruin everything. You could ruin everything.
Just had an expert, whom we paid, who cut in, into the tank, trying to find where it went.
So I think we should maybe assume, let's assume that the septic is under there, and then move the equipment cautiously, like, in accordance with, say it's there.
So are you, are you looking to approve?
To go forward.
A volunteer effort?
Yes.
Which I heard.
Start with the cleanup.
Yep.
Then at some point-
And then see what to do after that. And your cleanup is pull away, and it's just cautious, riding heavy equipment over a potential leaching field. Because we cannot, we have so far been unable to confirm the location of the leaching field through all records available and through expert, uh, consultation.
And, and I, 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 we could equip, equip the gazebo with a solar panel that will electrify a light in there that's, and it's controlled by, by dark.
Yeah, there's no wires and all that, uh, around.
So there's no electric bill from the, it just runs, and-
Yep.
Once in a while, you're going to change a light bulb.
Okay.
But can I ask, if you're looking to do a gazebo versus the, that takes up space that otherwise would be for the community garden, that, that's just like-
Well, just a small, this is for a few people to sit and wipe the sweat off their forehead after weeding the gardens.
I mean, I, I'm just asking.
How old is that playground over there?
How old is the playground over there? I have no idea.
Over 20.
Wouldn't they have had a plan back then where this leach field is? Because that's kind of a liability going in there and-
Victoria was like a year, a year or two old, and how old is she? 33, so 30 years ago. My kids were little when-
Mr. Perry was the gentleman, but Perry, he was in the construction business. And we went down and we didn't put, build that thing together with him.
Yep.
And I can remember, everybody always said there was a leaching field under. Now, maybe we're all, everybody was wrong, and there isn't. I just thought I'd bring it up, Jen, because I think-
It's helpful.
You don't want to find out if there is one and you just ruin it.
The hard way, in a bad way.
You've ruined it, you know?
Absolutely not. Okay.
I'm just trying to be cautious. That's all. If I want it done like yesterday, yes, I'd be, and I'm willing to help.
Yep.
But I'd rather do it correctly than to go forward just because it feels good and find out, oh, not so.
So we'll assume that the leaching field is under there as we're moving. Um, and then, yeah, so that, I mean, that's the assumption we're going to have to make. Okay. Um, so do we want to do the phased approval approach? So we'll do approve, cleanup first, and then, okay, so I will make a motion that we approve a volunteer effort to clean up the police station playground at a date where volunteers can be there, the weather is not awful, and can be done in a way safe, and can be done in a safe manner with equipment. And so, and when, maybe we should put an end date, to be completed by April 30th? Is that enough time? What do you think?
Oh, that's plenty of time.
Okay. Well, I just think, because it's, it's December next- you know what I mean, and there's rains and snows and all that, okay. So, so with a goal, I'm gonna put a goal date when we get a staff number in case things get crazy, of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and I'm looking for a second. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, um, any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote, Roland? Andrew? Aye, Matthew? Okay, so then Peter, I think that we should have update on this as, like, a ongoing thing, so that we remember that we put by April thirtieth as a goal to have this, like, at least the cleanup done. So in separate from that, I, I'll reach out to Kate Donovan, who does the garden group. And see what she thinks.
And perhaps Parks and Rec could be.
Yes, of course, for sure, sorry.
And if they want raised beds, I don't know if B V T would be able to build them.
Okay.
You know?
Well, let's start with Kevin and Kate connected, and then, okay. Alright, so I'm gonna move on from the playground. Okay, anything on departments? Public forum, there's actually people here, there's never anyone here, come on up Larry, this is like the most exciting meeting we've had.
So while I'm here, I thought I would ask, what is the monthly cost or the accruing cost of all the disruption at M E S? Students being transported, uh, relocation of the office, offices and all of that, and is that coming from the school budget or the town budget?
So, um, I don't know what the monthly accruing cost is. Um, the bus, kids get transported to school one way or the other, so the bus transportation costs, I don't believe have changed. Um, I'm not positive, but that's just a guess, considering we have to put them on buses anyway. And no one's presented us with a bill for any of the moves.
I thought I heard a figure of thirty thousand.
Well, I think that was like the one-time cost. In the, in the fall. Or end of summer, right? And then there'll be another fee, another cost to put everything back the way it was.
So there's not a recurring, recurring cost there?
No, it'll be, just happen one more time.
I have another question, which I should have asked at the town meeting. Um, this has to do with the expenditures of for the, for the evaluation of the school. The selectmen board voted four to one in favor of that. Who was the dissenting vote, and what was the reason for that?
It was Andrew.
I was.
It's always Andrew.
Plain and simply, it's too much, we can't afford it. We, if we went through with the, uh, I forget what's the term, if we're the plan, but to basically look at if it would make sense to do, and how they would restructure the school system, the project would be in the, what, was it ten million, close to?
I mean, the total project cost, it's, the low estimate we got was like seventy million dollars. And it's probably gonna be more like eighty, ninety, I mean, and it goes, like, everyone said about construction, it's ticking up every week.
Obviously, you were, the, the lone, the lone, uh, opposition on that. So your, your position wasn't obviously accepted by the others.
No, so, it was, but yeah, that was my position, was that we can't afford it. If at the current, uh, I think it's like fifty percent or fifty-two percent. Fifty-nine percent, sorry, fifty-nine percent reimbursement, um, by M E S, the, if that stays back, i- if that stays at the same level, we wouldn't be able to incur that cast, cost on the taxpayer, that would raise the taxes almost exorbitantly to the point where we would be out of comfort.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, you have a couple buildings, best to use, what, we already aren't filling the buildings as it is, so figure out how to use the buildings you have. Kinda go from there, right now, they don't have a plan.
Isn't that what we're paying, just paying a million dollars for?
Yes, yes.
But the answer Larry's question is, if I heard you correctly, you said, no, I'm against that, cause it's not fiscally responsible over time.
Because the plan that they're talking about would be to build a new school, not to reuse the schools we have, that's the key difference. So that, we can't afford a new building, or to completely build up a new high school, that's not affordable. We have buildings that aren't at full capacity. Use the buildings we have, fill them up. Go from there, if we need to have more space, we might need to have more space, but at the point, you, you, the school doesn't have a plan as to how to use the buildings they have right now. And so even if they did move forward with the plan to build a new school, that would be years, if not a decade out. In the meantime, we have schools that are sitting there at like, what, sixty, forty percent capacity? What are we doing with those? The longer a building, or wing of a building stays vacant, the worse condition it gets, so. You know, you need to fill it up, use what we have, then go and expand, you know, you just expand without using what you already have.
Couldn't agree with you more. That's, that's the answer, Larry. And I think that's what made sense when you said it, it made sense to me. If you're at that type of capacity, you know, from a plant and everything else, you gotta make sure you get your plant at a much higher capacity than sixty percent.
I mean, we always wanna be twenty percent not used to.
So you, you, you keep that, you keep that.
Sixty percent extra space is a lot.
Yeah, so to be, so I think, I believe, when, they are talking about building a new school, but part of that plan is to look at what we have and see if they could modify the middle school and keep M E S. And ju- or some, you know, keep two of the four buildings, and modify them in some way, like they're looking at the most optimum way. I don't disagree with Andrew that I would prefer myself to have seen, these are the two schools we're gonna use, and we need to maybe look at this. But, um, they did la- last year, at this time, actually, they did try to close the complex for this school year. And they were unable to convince parents that that was the right thing to do, which to alleviate some of the capacity. So, so then they found another way to close a school this year. And so now we're dealing with that.
So it's the chair of the capital committee, right? So, um, the concerns, uh, on the feasibility study, it was my, it was made clear upon query that the feasibility study, the million dollar feasibility study, would explore all po- uh, many, I won't say all, cause you never know what all is, but many options.
Several configurations.
Several configurations, so it's not fixed in stone, uh, wh- what they'll come back with. But I will say, the concern that I, one of the, I have two major concerns about the effort, and more relates not to where the feasibility goes, and wh- what the community has to decide, but the, the other two concerns are, you know, they have a large O P E B liability, I'm, you know, a broken record on that, but that's real debt. And it's nominally addressed in the budgeting process by B M R, and therefore, uh, through to the town. So it seems to me that that debt, and the capital committee did write a letter, which wasn't received particularly well, I understand why. But, uh, uh, I think the words of that were, uh, would probably not change today of that letter that was sent out back then. Uh, that they need to address the, that debt prior, before, at least at the same time that they're dealing with, taking on new debt for any large project, whatever it might be. The other thing that concerns me is that in the two-plus years leading up to where we are with this feasibility study effort, um, you know, the B M R had consultants in, and they evaluated all of the facilities, what the, what the immediate needs are for maintenance and repairs and so forth, and it, what I haven't seen is any asks for significant amounts or any amounts of money for addressing those. Or, you know, what I would call, some of the needs are, um, immediate, some of the needs have safety issues involved. And it doesn't seem, it's not obvious, I understand from conversations that some of the safety ones are being taken care of, but it seems to me that I would have expected to have seen a request for a capital item to deal with eight hundred thousand dollars of repairs that need to be done to the facilities, in the interim, because you're still dealing with something that's many years out here, so I, I, you know, I don't wanna harp on it, and I'm not second guessing, cause I know a lot of efforts gone into this process by a lot of people who volunteered a lot of time, and they're taking it very seriously, and they're trying to factor in the community's needs here. Concerns that Andrew has, concerns like Jerry's expressed. So you gotta get, you know, I think from the capital committee side of things, as well as the hat I typically wear, you know, I, I, I wish them the best in this effort to come out with the right solution for the town, but I do worry about O P E Bs, and I do worry about short-term needs for maintenance and repairs that probably need to be done, cost real money, but I haven't seen the request for that real money.
Okay. I think we very much.
Calling Curis, Tall Summit Street, I just wanna, seeing that I'm here tonight, I just wanna introduce the other young lady that's here with me, that's our new librarian in town, Alyssa Thompson, she's been on, uh, on the job for about two, two months now, um, and is really nice, because she is a Milva resident. So, you know, and she's got a growing family, so hopefully we'll have her for a while, so.
Thank you, welcome.
And there's a lot going on there, I've seen on Facebook, you've done a lot of cool things with the library, a lot of activities, it's great. That's gonna come out of the library budget, right?
Um, so correspondence, I see our audit report, this'll be some nice, light reading.
Yes, I would ask that you read this, uh, late at night, cause that's when you pay most attention to it, so it's in your packets, we'll have the auditors come in to go over this at a future meeting, they'll also have management letter comments, which are, I've seen the draft of them, they're the same as they were last year, our responses will be different, but also keep in mind, this is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one is what this report is, you're already, you know, they're involved in the twenty twenty-two audit right now. And this is similar, but I think having Bob Brown come in and talk about this to you all would be a useful, uh, exercise. Please don't ask me any questions about it. If you want, it's three sets of books is what, if you read this, you come away with, there's three sets of books, one is, you know, the municipal accounting, one is modified accrual, and one is accrual basis. Crazy stuff.
One quick question, do, when do we expect the twenty twenty-two audit?
So it's come in, so I don't have a timetable, and we're sort of, uh, you know, late in the game with. So that's a fair question.
Yeah, just cause it's great, but at the same time, it's.
Alright, um, next is meeting minutes? July tenth? Do everyone have a chance to take a look at them? I didn't see anything, uh, Andrew, you're vice chair, not vice president, so that's right. I liked it when you were vice president, I think it's funny. Do you wanna take another week to review, another meeting to review? Are you just putting me on the spot? Okay, why don't we do that? Alright. Oh, you're gonna, if you're a good voter? Okay, sure, well, I'm looking for a motion then to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the July tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you, Andrew, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roland, any discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote, Roland? Andrew? Aye, Matthew? Alright, yay, meeting minutes virtualized. Okay, selectmen reports, Roland?
No, I made mine already.
Okay, Andrew?
Uh, quick thing, so, for the, what was it, last meeting, uh, I had, um, asked about like different things, could we include that in the, like, for the merger of different departments, or merger of different line items? Could we put that, cause I know it was somewhat in the, um, at least last year's budget guidance report, but could we put that again in the budget guidance report? To kinda see, to get departments thinking about what might be able to be combined and.
Like regionalizing with, of departments, or?
Well, I wouldn't say just regionalizing with other towns, just because that does create a fixed cost that we can't control, which has always been the problem. Uh, but more of just like fixing, putting departments in maybe together, so, you know, I mean, that might have similarities in what they're doing, or common ca- cause of what they're going to be doing.
So, uh, I'm not sure I. So if you take, take the, the way we're set up, you know, the assessors are responsible for, is the, like, you take the finance part of the operation, it's a three-legged stool, you have a town accountant who has, you know, specific duties.
Yeah, I'm not.
Required by.
I wouldn't be suggesting doing those. Yeah, I, I was mainly thinking either departments that have a community-based, um, aspect to them, as to like serving the community, or committees that might have, that might be required to have, but not maybe be separate. Per se, like, for instance, a Parks and Rec and Green Committee, Community Committee have similar goals and similar jobs, in a sense, with slight differences.
So the Parks and Rec, p- uh, there.
That's, yeah, no, I mean, like, cause we have.
Green community, uh, requires, you know, we're a green community, they have to have a green community committee. And, you know, there are reports that have to be filed annually, that have been taken care of so far by our, also grant writer that we have.
But, for example, you could have a, you could have a subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Committee, so that way you don't have to, because we've always been having trouble getting volunteers for things, so in order to kind of cut down on that, and also make it easier for say, departments to work, or committees to work with each other, if they're doing, if similar things, instead of having, let's say, go to three different commi- communities, or committees, you can kinda go to one, and they'll kind of can take it all at the same time, so you can make subcommittees of, for that, that way, A, it's easier to communicate between them, and also more efficient for people going to the committees, and just for the committees to run for volunteers.
That would also, that would also adhere to statutory requirements that require to have, like, that commit, that specific committee, so you can just have that communication as opposed to combining.
I don't know how that helps in the budget guidance, though, because we don't, like, pay stipends or anything.
No, 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 but it could make it easier for the, because instead of having, separating the bu- money, you can pool it better. You know what I mean? And for instance, like, uh, library and senior center might have common goals as to a similar demographic that visit them, and similar kind of service to the community, that's how they're based. So if you kind of can pool them, you might be able to provide better services, more hours of service, but at maybe a more efficient and effective, ineffective manner.
So that, tha- that gets into organizational structure, which is not an easy, you know, municipal organizational structure, and I, I hear what you're, I think I understand what you're getting at with that, particularly with that last example, but you, you have a council on aging, it's in your bylaws, who and what they're supposed to do, and there's municipal law that says what they do. Likewise, you have elected library trustees that have responsibilities over, which you have none, you have no authority over the the bi- the library building itself, quite frankly. So there's, there's what Matt's talking about, it's just, it's, it's not, I, I, so I, I don't know how to go about what you're asking.
I mean.
Bylaw changes?
Well, there's byla- I mean, there's legal ramifications, then there's possibly bylaw changes that require voter approval and all that sort of stuff, and it's not something you can just, so I'm not sure how to flip that switch.
To be fair, I would say bylaw changes wouldn't be as difficult, because, I mean, in our survey, we have the question that would be about a regional agreement, the regional school agreement to change that, so that would be even more difficult than a bylaw change, but we're going forward, so that's why I'm saying it's not necessarily impossible, I mean, we've done bylaw changes. We just did them this past thing, so they're not impossible. And also with statutory things, most of the language is just about having a committee, so if you have a subcommittee, it still would meet those re- uh, regulations and those laws, but at the same time, it would make it much more efficient than having thirteen different commu- uh.
Committees that are doing different, some overlap of some of the activities, yeah.
I mean, we have, we've had subcommittees all the time for, um, the school has some, we had some for different jobs when we posted them. And to do certain things, so it's not impossible for us to do, we already have the precedents.
So, I think Andrew and it's no good deed goes unpunished. Like, why don't you go through the budget, and pick two that you think might have some synergies, and we can realize some economies of scale?
I got two. I listed them.
C O A and library? So can you, like, maybe dig into that a little bit more, and give a little bit of an example, like, get, like, talk to the head of the C O A and the library and be like, hey, I think there might be some opportunities for economies of scale, like, pick one, like, you have to do both. Pick one, su- one group. But I'll get you to do something else.
Going to Andrew, are you looking at combining the two of us together?
Yes.
In what way?
In the most basic way, by combining departments to make one new department.
Okay, are you talking about doing one building?
Yes.
Have you been in our library to see our collection?
I've been in both libraries, yes. Yep. I've been in the library and in the senior center.
And you can see our, and you can see our collection at the senior center.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Roland.
And you can see the activities at the senior center, uh, still continue to go on.
Right now.
Collection in there.
Yep, right now, both the senior center and the library are functioning on a very part-time basis.
Right.
I don't see any reason why there wouldn't be, would be any issue with.
So it's a town hall. It's on a part-time basis.
Yes. Yes. But you could easily have the community, both depart, uh, both the senior center and the library have their events at the same, or maybe not at the same time, per se, depending on what it is, but you could definitely schedule them all on, in one building.
Senior center things like in the mornings until like one o'clock and then did library things two to eight.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just thinking to put the, our collection in there, the books.
Yeah.
Physical books from our, the two collection. You physically put everything in there. I'm just picturing, that's their room. That's their room where they have their functions. What are you gonna do to those, those books when they're having a function?
Bookcases are on, along the sides of the walls and at the senior center in their main room, they don't have much of anything against the walls.
They have windows.
A few, yes, but they also have walls that you can put the bookcases with, so.
So I think this is just a, I don't think anyone should get, like, this is just a question to be asked and investigated.
I'm just looking at our collection in, in that.
Yeah.
Because I've been in, you know, I've been in the senior center and nothing.
So I tend to agree with you, Colleen. I don't know that we could fit all the bookcases in there, but let's take a look. Maybe it's possible. Maybe we'll all be pleasantly surprised and this will be a huge cost savings and Andrew will have saved the day.
Hardly, but.
Amazing.
It's an idea.
It is, it's an idea that it's worth, it's worth considering for sure, Andrew. And it's a good idea. If it were, if it, if it would really work, like, that'd be amazing. And then we could have a building to sell. I know there are so many people who want a coffee shop.
Or lease.
Or lease, yeah, for sure.
We don't have industrial or commercial revenue here.
Yeah.
So if we become landlords, we have something.
Yeah. No, it's, it's a good idea. It's worth looking into for sure. Okay. Um, the only thing I had was I got this today from Jerry Friend around BBT MCAS results and they're above the state average. So he said to share that with all of you. So you may look at that whenever you like. Matthew, anything for you?
No.
Okay. Um, Peter, Town Administrator Report?
Uh, nothing, just that I attended the Public Safety Committee meeting last week. And they'll have more meetings. Chief Coop is the Chair, Richard Primmelst is the Vice Chair. And, um, it was a good, it was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, healthy discussion of all, talking about staffing, shift coverages, all sorts of things. Uh, no, no easy answers, but a lot of good, uh, considerations for folks moving forward. And it will impact the budget process as well. So we'll learn more as time goes on. Just.
Okay.
Yep, really nothing further on.
Items not recently anticipated for today, that's okay. Our next meeting will be Monday, December fourth?
Yes, and you're gonna have license renewals?
Yes.
On the, on the fourth and also at your meeting on the eighteenth, those that aren't done on the fourth that have, you know, there are inspections taking place. There are sure certificates to be provided by the licensees and all that sort of thing. So that.
That's the liquor licenses?
Liquor licenses, uh, you know, auto sales licenses, uh, food licenses and that sort of thing. You'll also, at your next meeting, have the assessor in, probably by Zoom, uh, for the tax classification hearing and your vote on, you know, there'll be a document that you'll review and it will have single tax classification versus other, and you'll have to vote on that then.
Okay.
Dave Manzello will be on the screen for that meeting.
Perfect.
Okay. Great. Um, yep, that's all I have.
Okay. So do the executive session motions. I will make a motion that the board enter executive session, um, by roll call. So I move that the board of selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy relative to litigation, including to, including but not limited to Daytona, Daytona versus Town of Millville, Wendy Barber et al. versus Millville Zoning Board of Appeals members. Where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. I further move that the board of selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty A, section twenty A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the town, and the Chair so declares, um, Police Teamsters Union Local one seventy, returning to open meeting only to adjourn. Looking for a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll do a roll call vote. Roland?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. You're now in executive.